Honolulu City Council District 2 seat is up for grabs as Heidi Suniyoshi announced she's running for governor. Candidates Raquel Achiu, Lupe Funaki, Makua Rothman, Chad Suniyoshi, and Matt Wire are looking to represent the newly realigned district which includes parts of Waipahu, Mililani, and Waheva, and stretches from Mopalea on the North Shore to Kahalauu on the Windward Side. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Olenna Hu. Honolulu City Council District 2 covers diverse communities and neighborhoods, each with their own unique issues and challenges. The district includes Waikele and Kuniia, as well as Mililani, Waheva, Waialua, Haleeva, Sunset Beach, Kahuku, Laie, Waiahole, and Kahalauu. The neighborhoods vary from densely populated suburban tracts to agriculture lands, and from luxury beachfront resorts to a tight-knit college town. Heidi Suniyoshi is running for governor, which means the Honolulu City Council seat for District 2 is now open. The five candidates set to face off in the August primary election are joining us live tonight. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email or call us with your questions. We also encourage you to get involved with the conversation over on our Facebook page. Our guest tonight will be joining us via Zoom. Matt Wire grew up in Waikele and graduated from Mid-Pacific Institute and the University of Hawaii at Mauna Noah, earning a law degree in environmental and native Hawaiian law. He has served as a domestic violence prosecutor, policy advisor at the Honolulu City Council, and is on the Waipahu Neighborhood Board. Raquel Achiu was born and raised in Haleeva and is the vice chair of the North Shore Neighborhood Board. She spent 10 years volunteering as the North Shore AYSO coordinator and registrar, four years as the Waialua High School Class of 2017 co-advisor, and currently the chair of the Waialua High and Intermediate School Community Council. Makua Kai Rothman was born and raised on the North Shore. A father of three, this Kahuku High School graduate became the WSL Big Wave World Champion at age 18. He is a board member of the Hawaii Youth Surfing Development Organization and the Hawaii Tourism Authority Surfing Advisory Committee. Lupe Funaki is a board member of the Laie Community Association. This mother of 10 graduated from BYU Hawaii and from law school at BYU Provo. She has worked as an assistant to the Deputy Prime Minister of Tonga and as Director of International Student Services at BYUH. She has also served as a campaign manager. Chad Suniyoshi is a former U.S. Army Combat Medic, marriage and family counselor, and business owner. Born and raised in Hawaii, this longtime Waheva resident is a father of two. He has served as a community advocate and liaison for the past three council members to represent the district. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We're going to dive into some of your questions, and we will start with Makua Kai Rothman this evening, and then we will rotate around with everybody answering the same question as well. What is your stance on the rail project even though it's not directly impacting your district in particular?
Well, thank you for the question. I think the rail direct impacts every one of our communities indirectly, you know. And right now with the truncation of the rail up for proposal, the city and the state are waiting to hear back from the federal government to see if they will accept the proposal to release the remaining $744 million. You know, my stance would be to keep to where it's at right now should we get it accepted. And I'm really capitalize on that rail corridor and that urban core and develop there a lot.
Raquel, how about you?
Yes, the rail, it's always been, it's been a tough project, right? But we definitely need to regroup a little bit. We've been hit. Although the North Shore is not affected directly by that project, parts of our district are. Our central area is absolutely going to be hurt by the elimination of the parking garage there. So I think, I think that project has absolutely been riddled with project issues. To move forward, it's not going to go anywhere. We have to finish where we can finish and move forward and try to regroup as we go along.
Matt?
Yeah, I think that, you know, what residents expect from rail is transparency, financial responsibility, and really just to get it done already. I think that ultimately, the current administration and the new executive director have been proactive in getting rail back on track. And ultimately, I see rail as pivotal to really helping solve our affordable housing crisis by allowing for these vibrant mixed-use communities to develop along the rail line, to preserve also, you know, our agricultural land, what makes Hawaii so unique as we develop more in the urban core, and also just, you know, like I said, creating a more sustainable future so families can plan their lives, stop raising their kids in the rearview mirror, and have the quality of life that our district deserves.
Lupe? Chad, we will go over to you while we work out the audio issues.
Well, I think I'm in a unique position. For most of my life, I worked in the private sector as a businessman. I took companies from practically bankrupt to making multi-million dollars. We live on a different, different phase of things. We don't have the ability to just put money. So here's the thing that I've been watching for over 15 years now with the rail projects. Either people say they're for it or against it, but nobody ever solves the problem. What we need to do is solve the problem. Now, I can give you my idea of solving the problem and why it's important that we have problem solving, because whether you're for it or against it, we have a leak that is happening that's costing us $3 to $4 billion, and we need to have solutions. So one of my solutions right now is that currently, the problem here, you can hear it from me, is that we have all these millionaire consultants coming in here that's been running the project. Not one person has ever been fined or sued for mismanaging this project. So here's the problem when you're from a business standpoint. When we hire these people, hard hire these people, and there's no consequences, you know what the consequences are for doing a bad job? They actually make more money. They extend the project and they make more money. You will never, ever succeed in a business that the consequence is you make more money. So if I'm elected from that first year, I can promise this, I will go into that part, I will find these contracts, and we're going to hold these people accountable. It's just like a general contractor doing a house. Just think about it. You hire them to do a job. You hire them, say, we want this job for six months, and they extend it and extend it, and they tell you we're going to pay more for that project? Well, that can't happen anymore.
Thank you, Chad.
So that is my solution.
And Lupe, let's see if your audio is working. Oh, she looks frozen at the moment as well. All right, so, yeah, we're going to try and get Lupe in a few moments. So let's talk a little bit about this district. You know, obviously, it's quite diverse and spreads nearly across the whole island, or the whole northern part of the island. What are some of the greatest concerns from your constituents that you're hearing or from community members? And let's start with Raquel.
Oh, okay. Concerns within our district are, the most common, although there are many, property taxes. Our kupuna, I believe, we need to get a cap on their property taxes. We have a vast amount of kupuna that still remain within our district, and we need to absolutely find a way for them to get their property taxes capped so that they're not so stressed with that at that stage in their lives. The other top one would be DPP. The issues that we have with Department of Planning and permitting are many. We've been able to work very successfully thus far with them. I think Director Uchita has inherited a huge, massive job to be able to have to clean up and fix. It's not going to be fixed overnight, but I believe that with the right support and assistance, we can get that done together.
All right. Lupe, can we hear you now? Yes, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Let's have you talk a little bit about your stance on rail, and then if you could address the question about what your community members are seeing in your community as far as the major concerns.
Okay. So first, on rail, as a commuter, I traveled to Punahou High School for many years. I can appreciate what the rail is trying to achieve, but I do think it's important to make sure that people will use it and that we are working within costs that will not cause a burden on the people. So for now, I am to, I would support the short-term plan that we have right now in place and not allocate any more funds until we are reassured that, one, it won't cost more of a burden to the people who carry on after the rail is done. As for pressing issues in our community, first and foremost is housing, always has been. And to me, it's not just the physical building of a house, but it's, it's the spiritual and emotional confidence of our young people that they can actually choose to live here in our community should they choose to. So that's definitely at the top. We also have had recurring flooding issues. I know that there are also concerns with short-term rentals. And then just for me personally, with some of the recent natural disasters, I'm also very interested in ensuring we have a good emergency preparedness plan.
Thank you. And Matt?
Yeah, like Lupe said, the main issue that comes up when I've been walking door to door is the cost of housing and the cost of living. And it really saddens me when I come across folks that just feel defeated, like it's not possible to reach a point where people don't have to move away to afford a home and be able to live in Hawaii, because, you know, I'm running, and I'm sure a lot of us are running, because I think there are solutions unto these problems. So in addition to cost of living and housing, as I'm sure we'll talk about, infrastructure has been a real big issue in the community from Haleeva to Kahuku down to Kahalauu, whether it's the road or the sidewalks, you know, the flooding that goes on. And I think that the city can be more proactive in bringing in federal funds, all these grant monies that we don't apply for every year, to help really uplift our community. You know, of course, public safety is a big issue with our first responders and that coverage gap between Waheva and Kahuku with no police substation. Of course, preserving our natural resources with our water crisis, I think everyone sees as an issue, because without water, not only can we not live here, but, you know, but alone we can't, you know, solve our housing crisis and meet the needs of our people.
And Chad?
You know, I was in a unique position. I actually walked the district probably six times. So some of the things I've heard, for one, the roads on the coastal sides from the waves are falling in. We've got to fix these roads, because in 10 years from now, on the highways, it's going to practically be underwater. Second is a crime. That's really big right now. You walk the streets and this crime, you know, is on the rise. That's one of the big, public safety, that's the core of keeping our kupuna and our kids safe, is we have to have public safety. And that's one of the biggest things. The last thing I hear is environmental impact with the rise of tourism, you know. We have to find the balance, because it's impacting our land and the, our district, I am biased, is the most beautiful district, and the impact it's causing is tremendous for the quality of life for our local people, the traffic that we've got to go through. So those are some of the things I've heard on a daily basis.
Makua?
Well, living in the district all of my life, you know, it really comes down to the transparency and accountability of the city and the spending as well. A lot of the funding that goes to rail that can be used for our public safety. Public safety is huge. Our beaches, our beach parks, you know, we have two jet skis between Kana Point and Hia up here. I think a very important issue I've been hearing in my community, especially on the North Shore, is the separation of EMS and ocean safety and making those departments autonomous of each other. I really think that we are all first responders, taking care of all first responders, make sure the staffing in the city is right, you know, really keeping checks and balances on HR. Why does it take so long for the city and county to hire people? The hiring process is out of whack. I mean, it really comes down to safety, I think, public safety, crime, you know, the trust. We've got to get public trust back in our law enforcement. You know, there's no, the community and law enforcement really has to work together to really solve crime. And I think that us as city council members, we really are first responders for our communities. We take those voices, you know, we walk around, we hear the concerns of each one of our constituents in our communities, and we take those back to the council. We pass legislation on them, we keep checks and balances, and we make sure that our communities are safe.
Thank you. Moving on, you know, obviously, the North Shore region, very popular for tourists and beaches and whatnot. What would you say we can do to mitigate tourism's impact on the community? Matt?
Definitely, I think that the city can be proactive in having those conversations with the community about where we can implement maybe management plans or better protection of our natural resources, because we really see the impact of tourists in our community in that way. Of course, with the traffic, I think by improving some of these infrastructure issues we've been talking about, by again, including those federal funds, we can make the impact a little less on the broader community. I think there's some 10 million visitors every year and enough space for 7 million of them. So that means, once those hotels are full, those additional folks are filling our residential communities. So I think enforcing, you know, our vacation rental laws is a big way to help lower that impact as well, both by, you know, reducing the traffic, the issues with noise in the community, but also by pushing more units back into the housing inventory, so folks can actually have more access to more units, which would reduce costs, right? Because there'll be more supply. And I think all of that together is stuff that the city can be looking at. Some of it we're doing now, and I think we really just need to expand that work to really minimize the impact of tourism on our community.
Lupe?
You know, we have, we have casual conversations about this topic all the time, especially when we're actually sitting in traffic and we're trying to get to some football game on the other side or down in Mililani. And so I really haven't had the time to sit and listen to the community, but I think it's something that is a solution that belongs to the people to be part of, finding what the options are. I do know that there have been conversations about, you know, people who come to this side, they should pay some kind of fee for visiting, so that we have some kind of fund that's used to maintain the infrastructure that provides the safety for visitors to come. I just think that would be an issue that I would want to hear a lot of conversation about, make sure that residents where heavy traffic is affected are part of that solution.
Chad?
Well, two things that's very important and dangerous that just happened. So the city was given a 3% on the transit-oriented tax. Now, that was allowed to be put in the general fund, and that possibly could use for rail. Now, none of these things would actually work if we don't have the funding. As your council member, North Shore and that area gets impacted the most. I will fight for every dollar of that transit-oriented tax money that should be rightfully for the people. It shouldn't be going for rail. It should be for the people. Secondly, one of the first things that I will do is initiate a bill. It's called a rotation. Every, I will pick out 10 beaches. Every beach, I want a three-month hold on tourism. Now, it's not going to impact the whole island, that tourists would still come. So let's say Laniakia gets three months off, we move it to Kaialua, we move it, and that way, the people of Hawaii, the people that live there can have a better quality of life, and also the environment can rebuild itself. So that's one of the first things I'm going to do is initiate a pilot program that offers a three-month hold on every single beach, rotating it around to help the community.
Thank you. Makua?
Thank you, Olenna. I really think that the North Shore, especially our beaches, are the most overused resource and the most, on the most overused district and the most under-resourced. I really think, like Chad said, that transit tax really has to go towards fixing that and having the budget to be able to do so. You know, a lot of that money gets to be put towards rail. And, you know, we have to keep our community safe, you know, over tourism, over crowding of our beaches really leads to a lot of stress on our first responders, on our Honolulu Police Department, who is understaffed, on our ocean safety. So really mitigating the tourists, maybe through different, you know, programs that we could implement to create revenue, so that we don't have to tax the people so much, create revenues through, you know, tourism, and implement those to use them for resources, use them to staff, help staff our first responders. Like Chad said, our beaches really doing new breaks. You know, we need to find ways to mitigate the tourist impact on our beaches and our coast big time.
Raquel?
Thank you. First off, we have to consider who should come first, the community or the tourists? I think we need to address the carrying capacity. I believe in the mid-2000s, we were at a pretty decent intake of maybe 4 or 5 million, which was comfortable, not great, but comfortable. We were still able to have a decent way of life. We're on overload, and it's getting worse. And I think we have to fight, figure out a way to charge maybe a landed tax on that visitor, charge that fee per person for the incoming visitor, and utilize those funds to support the communities that it impacts the most. But carrying capacity is a major factor in all of that.
Chad, this next question will be posed to you first, and I actually have two questions from viewers that are related to a similar topic. Some of them are asking about what your positions are on Laie being rezoned as a resort, or also taking development of agricultural land and rezoning it for commercial use. What's your stance?
Look, people come to Hawaii for, they don't come to Hawaii to rent rollercoaster rides. They don't come to Hawaii for gambling. They come to Hawaii for the beauty of Hawaii. So from an economic standpoint, if you destroy our Ina, especially where we live, why would the people come here? They would go to Vietnam, Thailand. So we've got to protect our natural resources. We have to protect our land. You know, we built rail for transit-oriented development, to build in the urban core. So I would very, every decision I made, I can tell you this, I will keep in mind the next generation and the impact it's going to cause to them. So on a case-to-case basis, you know, I'm very against destroying our land up there. So that's my position.
Thank you. Lupe?
Well, being from Laie, this is definitely a hot topic. I personally, my father is a farmer, has always been, even though he was an educator. So I know the value of not just having farmlands that you live off of and you grow, but what that means for how we live and how we feel about the people that we live with. And I think there's high value in preserving that, not just the land, but the lifestyle that comes with the land. At the same time, we have a university of higher education, and I recognize that development and technology is the way to stay connected with the world. We cannot live in a bubble and be isolated from everything else that's happening. And so that conversation belongs to, again, the people who live there and who it will impact the most, because there's strengths to both. But I agree with what Chad is saying, we need to preserve what makes Hawaii unique. And so that's always going to be my base, my home base that I want to stay with, and do all that we can, if there's a good reason that I think raises our awareness and need to develop for the betterment of the people in that community, and they support it, then I'd be open to that.
Matt?
Yeah, I think the conversation we had about rail earlier really speaks to this, right? The need to develop in the urban core, where we can use density. It's still mindful of the character and nature of particular neighborhoods, but use that density to create these mixed-use communities where we can have the housing, can have the small businesses, but then still protect that preservation in agricultural land and critical spaces. Now, I do think that each community has to sit down and kind of contemplate what housing and opportunities for those experiencing homelessness can look like in their particular community, because as we know, a lot of longtime residents that are homeless are just going to return to the place, you know, that they're from. And when we look at, you know, our youth having to move away because not being able to afford to live here, I think we have to start to assess, you know, what type of projects can the community coalesce around, and what kind of projects can we realize that meet that need, but still protect these critical spaces? And I think that's part of what the city has to be proactive in doing. That's what developers have to be proactive in doing. They have to be going to the community, listening to the responses to proposed projects, and then actually, you know, addressing those critiques that come up, so we can, you know, create a project that actually works for everyone. We're not going to solve, I think, all of these major crises we're facing, our housing crisis, cost of living, climate crisis with our road being eroded away and houses falling into the ocean. And as we get out of those silos and have conversations at the community level, and I do think that this new generation of leaders emerging recognize these complexities and are willing to take on that task. And so I'm excited about that. And I think that, you know, as we tap into that generational knowledge in the community, find those answers about what's appropriate for each community, we can really create solutions to all these problems.
Thank you. Raquel?
Thank you. Yeah, when do we stop sacrificing our lands for commercial activity resorts? We're not providing enough security for our own communities. It's not to say that some commercial activity would benefit our communities, but that's where our communities have to speak up. And Laie, Kahuku, Ha'ula, they're all very well-known for the stance they take on their projects out there. And there's a lot of rich history out there that needs to be protected, but commercial activities would have to come at the approval of that community. Otherwise, we're losing lands at a rapid speed, and we have nothing to sustain ourselves. So the projects would have to be very specific and very much community-involved.
And Makua?
Thank you, Olenna. You know, there's a lot of legislation being passed that support people's image, politicians' image, instead of really supporting the people. And I think really going into those communities, asking the questions. I am a member of these communities. I was, you know, I was raised in Laie as well, and I do want answers. I want to know what we can live with, you know, what benefits our communities, because it's not just a question of livable wages, of housing, of safety, it's a question of community education, budget and finance, and sustainability. What can our community sustain? Back in the days, they had the Ahupua'a system. Each Ahupua'a was different. What worked in this Ahupua'a didn't necessarily work right on the other side of the river. We have to take communities on a case-by-case basis. We have to sit down with the leadership and the community to see first what they want, what is sustainable, and what we can actually do together to more efficiently benefit these people, because ultimately, it's the question of hope. You know, what is the hope for the future of these communities? You know, what is the hope for a better Hawaii? Is it to sacrifice, you know, our rural lands? And like Chad said, everybody comes here for the beauty of Hawaii. We cannot sacrifice what makes us so special, because one day, people will go away. Our local communities are already going away, because what we've been doing is we've been sacrificing our people and our lands for outside interest. And that's been going on for too long, but people need to speak.
All right, moving on, we have a question from Facebook. Adalina writes, may we have a brief description of your plans for affordable housing in Ko'olau'oa, please? And I'll start with Lupe, as you did talk about housing as one of the major concerns earlier.
Oh, wow. Where to start with that? I just think that's such a monster issue, and I was very involved as a community member and the Laie Community Association when Laie did a full-fledged, blown-out program proposal for affordable housing in the area, which eventually, after several years, did not actually move forward. So I think, to be honest, I don't have all the answers for that. I would be very careful to propose a plan without actually going back to the community. What I do recognize is that our local people who need this affordable housing support also need work opportunities that will match the capacity and ability to afford these homes. That's one of the biggest challenges. So whether that means a more stringent education, employment preparation, being more focused on the type of work that fits our area, that allows them to be lucrative and successful financially, we can't ignore the reality that culture plays into the way our people live in the Ko'olau'oa area, particularly those who are challenged by lack of housing, affordable housing. But even to say affordable housing seems so subjective. So I'm just going to comment, it's an issue. There are cultural factors with multiple generations in one home in this area, but I would not even want to try and answer that without getting to the community and being very active in recruiting that, their participation for conversation.
All right. And Matt, over to you.
Yeah, I think one of the best ways to meet the needs of the community, or at least, you know, make it in the lack of inventory we have, is again, by enforcing our vacation rental laws that we have on the books, and also looking at maybe a vacant home tax to maybe push some of the, you know, 70 And also looking at maybe a vacant home tax to maybe push some of the, you know, seventy thousand units we have statewide that are just vacant. Um back into the housing market. So as demand or supply goes up, rather, those costs will come down and and housing will become more more affordable. You know, someone, I think Makua brought up earlier, the staffing issues at the city. And that's a big issue with DPP being able to enforce the vacation rental law, right? And the city across the board and and all the departments is losing staff to the private sector. And so I think, you know, we can't resolve it by just throwing money into the budget all the time. Um when you just have vacant positions, right? Because that won't fill the position. We have to look at, how do we use A-differentials? How do we make these city jobs more attractive? So folks stop leaving for the private sector and come back to the city. So we can speed up, you know, of course, the permitting process, but also, you know, enforce a lot of these these permitting and planning laws that are affecting our community. I think that's just, you know, one, one particular area. I think we can also have the discussion, like I mentioned earlier. What what is appropriate for a particular community in terms of providing certain areas of the maybe are within the sustainable community plan? You know, as some members have brought up, yeah.
All right, Makua, over to you?
Well, I think, you know, I've been hearing a lot about being proactive and um at the city. For some reason, legislation seems like it starts tail first and we start chasing right till after. You know, instead of looking directly into affordable housing right away, looking into legislation to keep those houses affordable. Should be come with affordable housing plan. How do we keep those affordable housings affordable into eternity into the future? You know, some kind of, um implementing some kind of uh, you know, title, restricted title policy where it's only for residents in Hawaii. And somebody, as a as a council member, not being afraid to step up and saying, yes, these properties need to go to residents. Some kind of qualifying credential and who is a resident, how you qualify for these house, these housing projects. You know, um it's um, it's it's all too much. We uh implement uh legislation with no enforcement. You know, laws without enforcement is what? It's not law at all. So I really think looking into ways to keep the housing affordable, looking into ways to keep it, the housing local. And at the same time, really going back to the communities and seeing what works in these communities, what areas are available. What are we sacrificing for these affordable houses? But I really think it comes down to being nose-first, thinking ahead and really implementing solutions so that we can have control. So these houses do not go into the open market. We're at international market nowadays. People will come, they'll use every loophole. To get a hold of these affordable houses and sell them on the open market. We cannot let our people be subject to any more of that kind of um, you know. Uh man, I just, it just really frustrates me because thinking about uh all our people go through for housing right now.
Thank you. Raquel?
Thank you. Um we just had this topic recently at a neighborhood board meeting as well. Um so affordable housing in general, I mean, anywhere. Um but Ko'olau also, because, you know, there's a vast amount of land um just throughout the North Shore. I think affordable needs to be defined, number one. In a market of homes of one point five million dollars, what is, what is considered affordable? I mean, does that mean eight hundred thousand dollars is an affordable house? That just doesn't work. I would revert to the community that a project is based on. And I wanna hear what that community wants, what works for them, what is beneficial to them. And what is affordable in that area. We have to do a comparison. But I do agree with Makua in terms of enforcement. We do have a lot of great policy on the books, but no enforcement. And we need to pursue and if, and push that issue in terms of making this project work, whatever project it may be.
Chad?
First of all, I'm very disappointed with affordable housing. It's not affordable for my kids. But but affordable rates, I I've looked on real estate, seven hundred thousand, what child, college kid can afford that? It's very disappointing that we call that affordable, first of all. You know, every day I wake up and I see my daughters and I just, it just hurts me to know that they're not gonna be able to live here. You know, and when we lose that, we lose the kids, we lose our law spirit, because that's what makes Hawaii special, is our kiki. And we have to do better. We have, the state has a majority of lands out there. We need to get some of those lands and truly build affordable housing for our kids. And when we do build affordable housing like Ko'olau Loa, we gotta make sure that the local people in that district live in there, not people from the mainland. Coming in to live in these affordable housing. For the people that live in Kahuku, the people that live in Laie, they should have the first rights to those houses.
Thank you. Switching gears a little bit, we're gonna talk a little bit about flood mitigation and planning as it pertains to your district. And we're gonna start with Raquel.
Thank you. Um flood mitigation, yes. A huge, huge concern within the North Shore community. Um based on the flooding we had last year. Um clearly, there needs to be a lot of work. First of all, with stream maintenance, working with all entities, all governing bodies. And we, our board, the neighborhood board is working on a plan right now with a variety of agencies. Because we are now dealing with federal, state, and county, as well as private landowners. And the responsibility of maintaining those streams and riverbeds. We need to um implement a very aggressive plan to, which we are working on right now. To be able to implement a more effective plan of actual maintenance, clearing. Uh making the waterways clearer, obviously, and easier, not so it's, you know, this last flood really took out a large part of Haleiwa. We do need federal funding and that's the only way that's gonna happen. So we have had conversations um with our representatives and congressmen. And I do, I do believe we're on a good path to um initiate a plan very soon.
Lupe?
Yes, I have been flooded myself in my own home more than once, even in my youth. And so to be an adult and still having flooding issues with my own children. It makes me wonder if we are really paying attention to what has happened before. I echo what Raquel has mentioned and just think that the, the data's there. There's history, there's enough support to put in um the request for additional funding. So that we can be more preventative in making sure those streams and the waterways are cleared. I mean, I honestly, this last couple of days, we had some good rain. I honestly thought that my flooding days were gone. And didn't even realize that our house was flooding until a neighbor came and said, hey, I think you need help. So in my mind, I think this is clearly an issue we know has happened before. We just need to really make it happen. Take what we know and get the funds that will help us to be more preventative.
Makua?
Well, I'll give you a perfect example, Laie, where we're all North Shore. Thirty years, they've been waiting to clean out that stream. When I was a little kid, they were fighting to clean out that stream in Laie. I think they had till next summer to get the funds encumbered by the mayor. To put skin in the game, to help partner at least, to put money to clean out that stream. Flooding is public safety. People can die, our people can die. This is not a pressing issue for us as city council members, to get out there and find these funds, ask the right questions, hold the right people accountable. And almost make these funds available, no matter what. If it, if we're gonna jeopardize the safety hour of our people for bureaucracy, red tape. And really, oh, we have to work together to find these funds. Our people that, uh you know, our people are not. You know, obviously, they're not important to the city or whatever it is right now, because if they were, we'd get it done. We have to get out there, we have to tackle issues, we have to categorize them, we have to put them in order. Okay, this one needs to be done. Thirty years they've been waiting, let's get the funds, boom, next stream. Why do I live there my whole life, Haleiwa? I've never seen flooding like that. Why? Looks like nobody has funds to clean up the streams. Why is there no funds to keep our citizens safe? First and foremost, we have to go back to safety. There are funds there. They just need to really release, and we need to go and get them and get the jobs done, keep our people safe.
Chad, over you?
So this is where, you know, I was fortunate to have some experience. So the first thing I would do, so we always are reactionary. Let's say, for example, Red Hill. We know Red Hill was happening, but we waited till something happened to finally do something. Now, we already know where the high watermarks are. We know where the flood, we need to start making a map. The things I would do is work with DPP and map out the areas that we have to move infrastructure, move things, because we already know this thing. We start with DPP with the mayor, we map up a a plan. And then we use that plan and start moving things now before people get hurt. We don't wait till the time it comes and a flood happens and say, oh, by the way, we're gonna do it now. No, we map it out now. And we'll get the funding and then we, we, we implement. That's, that's solving solutions is, is looking ahead.
Matt?
Yeah, I mean, folks are frustrated across North Shore to Kahuku, you know, the the flooding that has stalled projects, community projects. I think that it's important that we look at, at ways we can actually bring these funds into the city, right? Um invest in flood mitigation in Kahuku, I'm like, they're, they're working on right now. Invest in resilience hub in Ko'olau Loa, increase our emergency preparedness with emergency shelters. Um increasing, you know, the signage out there for for um emergency routes. And, you know, doing the flood mitigation, the stream cleaning that we talked about. Um I think the city needs a dedicated full-time position to go out and pursue all these funding opportunities, whether it be from Fish and Wildlife. Department of Transportation, HUD, USDA. Um you know, at the Kahuku Community Association meeting a couple of months ago, there was a Fish and Wildlife grant. It kind of just slipped, you know, out the door because no one had applied for it. And I think by bringing those monies in and leveraging those, right, we can really protect the entirety of our community. And just quickly back to the affordable housing conversation, I think when we're talking about affordable housing, um it it really is income-specific. So I can say no one, whether you work at Foodland, you're a teacher, you're a firefighter, should have to spend more than one-third of their monthly paycheck on their rent. Or on their mortgage. And we can achieve that by reforming our our housing policy.
Thank you. As talking a little bit about Kunia now. Um you know, obviously, it has some of the most ideal agricultural lands on the island of Oahu. Makua, what would you do to try to foster more growth within that area? Production of produce and fruit and whatnot that we can export?
Well, first, I'm a community member as well. And all I hear is I've been in, I've been in the city for a long time on this farm. And I have all this experience in the city, direct access to all these uh, you know, de- departments and all this stuff. But only now am I hearing anybody talk about this flood mitigation. I've been there for fourteen years, I've been in the city. How long? How come only now I only hear people talking about this flood mitigation? You know, only now we can start doing them, because it's time to talk to the people? I I I'm just kind of confused here of how how we have direct access to all these departments, neighborhood boards, you know, direct, you know, um. Aids to the council members, but only now we talking about them. So it's just some, as a frustrated community member, my kids, you know, Lupe's kids. In danger right now from this kind of stuff. And only now we're hearing about people wanting to do something. I don't know. But um going back to Kunia, excuse me, um I just wanna say, I just met with Kohona Farms. And they say it's very, very hard to create a business because of the planning permit, the planning process. It's so hard to put up one drying warehouse, one steel, one commercial piece of equipment for their uh industry. You know, Kohona Farms are gonna go back to um um growing sugarcane, boat strings, back from the ancient days, the original cane. They make a product from seed to package that can be an import, export product. But the, they run into so many issues, two years for a building. Who has, who has businesses that has that much resources? That can wait that long for their business to be able to come to fruition? We really have to streamline the processes in DPP, streamline the processes that help these businesses become successful. To actually address that agriculture need. Because right now, all we're doing is carrying that, killing that ultra entrepreneurial spirit, excuse me.
So there are five of you and we're trying to give each person equal time to answer each question, so I apologize if I am cutting people off. But Lupe, your stance on agriculture in Kunia?
Well, I think Makua raises a really good point. I mean, even if you know what you wanna grow, I'll tell you what my dad grew. My opinion is that we grow, one, not only produce that we can grow well in our climate with our land and soil. But grow what our people will eat. I personally love pineapples, but I don't know if that's really a local produce that many of our local families want. So on our farm, we always grew tapioca, yam, bananas are al- always very, very useful. So I think whatever we grow has to be what our own local people want to eat, what they will take, what's good for health and use. So that we will be motivated to actually grow it in large amounts and then export it and share it. Because we grow it well, we grow it the best, whatever, you know, um fruits, mangoes, guava. Um all those things are always good and they do well in our climate. But I think even if you have good products, what Makua is raising is the bigger issue.
Yes. Chad?
I think the one thing that coronavirus and epidemic has taught us is that we need to be serious about being sustainable on this island. You know, if the ship stopped, we got about seven days of food. So we have to be able to take this serious and start growing and sustain our economy through our agriculture, you know. One of the things that I I was kind of impressed in is Senator Del Cruz with his Food to Cow. You know, that's a a good start of, you know, people growing, selling, uh training the college students. Um you know, for me, that's a good start and I would support projects, projects like that to um start getting really serious about sustaining our own economy, you know.
Thank you. Raquel, over to you?
Thank you. Well, as a very active agricultural farmer and rancher, I can tell you first and foremost. These ag lands, we need to make sure they're being used as ag. A lot of them are not. They're being shimmyed off into fake farms. And subdivisions that aren't real. Um there's no support for the farmers and ranchers. We don't have the support that protects our crops or our livestock. Um we have trespassing issues. We can't, you know, you need hard work, you need hard people. To be able to come in and make that difference and provide that support for them. Yes, structurally, we need work at DPP. We all know that. That is absolutely an issue. And we can address that. We have very successfully done that with Director Uchita in a couple of instances, and I'm very happy with his response. And time of that, that response. But the bottom line is, we need to make sure these lands are protected for ag to begin with. Because they're not.
Matt?
Yeah, I I think one of the biggest things that the city does or can do to protect and support farming is. By, you know, ensuring that we're not overly rezoning agricultural land. Um something I worked on also at the council is a, you know, when I was working for uh Councilmember Tommy Waters. Was working with the administration to get a food administrator appointed within a CCSR. Someone to work with local industries to ensure that we're supporting farmers and ranchers to create a more sustainable future. Uh I believe we should be putting ARPA funds towards supporting local farmers. I support the eleven million dollars. Uh that the administration was putting forth uh to support local farmers. I think whoever is the next council member, I need to keep their eyes on that. Work with the industry, work with the stakeholders, you know, ensure that we're supporting, you know, a more diversified economy. I think by investing in the, in the Oahu Workforce Development Board, uh we can create retooling and retraining programs. To get more farmers on the land, because I know right now that's one of our biggest struggles, right? Is to find folks that can actually get onto the land, farm and create that sustainable future.
Thank you. We're getting towards the end of the show and um I wanna ask a question about crime. And so this actually is coming from Funika from Mililani online. She says, what will you do to help stop the crime wave? That's rapidly increasing in your community. And we can start with Lupe.
Well, I I'm an island girl. And so one of the ways that at least growing up in Laie that we control crime is. Everybody knows everybody. It's a good thing, it's a bad thing. But relative to crime control, there's value. We live in an island, so I feel like I can argue this point. That our cultural way of taking care of each other, being a village that works together, pays attention. Sometimes we get so, um I feel, sometimes we run our system by what's written in the books. And we don't really develop the relationships within our community. That's the strength of the Ko'olau Loa area. That's the strength of my community. And when you know each other, you're more likely to influence your neighbors. To me, that's the long-term solution. Change how we live together so that we care enough about each other. That we can ask each other to help with issues that come up, rather than always running to the police to change, to fix our problems. If we can start by making these community relationships stronger, I think we'll do a better job helping to raise our children together.
Chad, over to you?
So I'm very passionate about this. Um most people think we just need to fund the police and, you know, it's their responsibility. But the policemen are not superheroes. We need a broad approach. So for fifteen years, I've been part of nonprofits that with uh Life After Prison, Project Think For Gangs. What we have to do is, so the recidivism rate right now, for a hundred people coming out, sixty percent will do a crime. So sixty people of a hundred will redo a crime. That is where a crime. That is where a problem lies, and that is where we need community help. We need to train them, give them jobs. We need to help them be successful individuals, and that's what we did. So just a good example, one of the companies I was running, we hired 70% of people coming out of prison. And we trained them, and our recidivism rate was less than 2%. So from day one, I'm going to be very passionate about this, is working with the nonprofits, working with the community, and working with the police together. That is the only way you can stop this wave of crime. We can't just blame the police and expect them to do everything. They're doing a great job. You know, I've sat on many boards with these guys. I mean, people don't know how much they put in to help this community on their own time. So I just want to put a shout out to the police department and thank them for their, you know, the great work.
Matt, over to you.
Yeah, I think one of the first things the city can do, and I say the city because there's certain aspects of the criminal justice system that the state oversees, but the city can make more investments in mental health and substance abuse treatment. You know, as a prosecutor, I'd see folks come in, and maybe you're lucky enough to get a judge to order, you know, mental health or substance abuse treatment, or even dual diagnosis if someone has both, you know, suffering from both. And then there's a waitlist, and then they end up not getting the treatment they need, and they end up reoffending, committing maybe a more serious crime. And I think by supporting that and supporting, you know, more support services, we can lessen the burden on our officers who aren't social workers. Right? They're already stretched thin with some 300 vacancies in the department. You know, by expanding that support, you can allow the officers to focus on the actual job they're there to do. You know, support them in doing community policing so they can build those relationships with the community, rebuild that trust, rebuild, you know, what will draw more folks into the department. And of course, we have to support, you know, the wages. It's going to keep them from being stolen away to other cities that pay more. And of course, you know, address our cost of living crisis and housing crisis so that doesn't happen.
Makua?
Well, first thing I would do is create a team and go into these communities. I would take the resources needed and not just advocate for them or fund them, but actually take them on the ground into these communities. We know where these housing projects, you know, homeless camps are. We know that working together, maybe me being able to bridge the gap between these people and law enforcement, getting out there, talking to them, sitting down with them and saying, hey, guess what? Addressing a lot of the issues and rehabilitating someone really starts with addressing the core issues. There are underlying issues of why a lot of these people create, commit crime. We have to get out there, boots on the ground. We can't be afraid. We can't just say, oh, they're criminals, they're homeless. We can't, we have to go out there and treat them just like me and you, brother to brother. We have to go out there and speak to them like they're our brothers. Make them feel comfortable sometimes, you know? All it takes is a little bit of Allah sometimes to help someone change their mind. Because it's really up to the individual. It has to be up to them to change their way of living, to change their mind, to become a better person. And we have to go in there and sit with them and really bring these resources to them. The North Shore, where are you going to find the resources at? You know, we're Ko'olau Loa, it's all downtown. We need to bring those resources out there. We have to be in those communities, hand in hand with these people to help address these underlying issues and the underlying causes of crime in these homelessness camps. So I will be out there, I will be with these people regardless. Because when there's an active shooter at sunset, I called the police, they gave me the opportunity. I walked in there, everybody strapped up, you know, bulletproof vests to the core. I got in a Bearcat, I got to that house, and I got that active shooter that was going to shoot somebody or one of those himself, and actually talked to him with aloha and love and got him out of that situation together with the police. I will work with them, we will tackle these issues.
Raquel, over to you.
Thank you. We need more police in our district. Police should be assigned, not by the number of 911 calls, but by the size of our district. We have the largest district on this island. I know we have police out here, they do respond, we have a good relationship with them. But we need more because we have a vast amount of area to cover. You know, it comes down, I agree with Matt, with the rehabilitation aspect, but it also comes to education. We have to train and get our community to trust the police again and be able to have that confidence to call them and know something's going to be done. Not, oh, I don't want to call, nothing's going to happen. That's a huge part of the attitude that exists out here. Nobody wants to call because they don't think anything's going to happen. And that's where we have to make that, we have to build that gap. We have to fill that hole and be able to know that when the people call, they're going to get a response and there will be action taken.
All right, I'm going to sneak in one last question and just, no? Okay. I was going to ask for a yes and no answer, but I guess not. All right, well, mahalo to you all for joining us tonight. And we thank our guests, the candidate for Honolulu City Council District Two, Chad Suniyoshi, Lupe Funaki, Makua Kai Rothman, Raquel Achiu, and Matt Wire. Join us next week as we continue our election 2022 coverage on a special 90-minute edition of Insights on PBS Hawaii. We will be speaking to the leading Democratic candidates for governor, Viki Kayatano, Josh Green, and Kai Kahele. Please join us then. I'm Olenna Hu for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Aloha and ahoiho.